Good evening. My name is Robert Koch and I am the Director of the Cape Ensemble. This is a group from Cape Elementary in Cape Coral. And this is a select group of children in 4th and 5th grade. We're going to be singing for you some songs, well actually one song that goes back to our Veterans Day program, and then the rest of it will be holiday related. So we hope you enjoy what we have to share. We'll begin with a song called Proud to Be an American.
If tomorrow all the things are gone, I've worked for all my life. And I'd have to start again with just my children and my wife. I thank my lucky stars to be living here today. Cause the flag still stands for freedom and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee. Across the plains of Texas. From sea to shining sea. From Detroit down to Houston. And New York to LA. There's pride in every American heart. It's time we stand and say. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today. Cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA.
Thank you. Our next song is a song of Spanish or Mexican derivation. It is the Piñata Song. Hope you enjoy.
When the lanterns are lighting, our friends are united in chorus, united Piñata. There's no need to remind us of Michael's blindness in chorus, united Piñata. Ake buena, ake buena, ake buena ke buena ke buena. Ake buena, ake buena, ake buena ke buena ke buena. All the children will scramble for candy. All the children will scramble and shout. All the children will grab for a cookie. And the other good things that spill out. When the lanterns are lighting, our friends are united in chorus, united Piñata. There's no need to remind us of Michael's blindness in chorus, united Piñata. Ake buena, ake buena, ake buena ke buena ke buena. Ake buena, ake buena, ake buena ke buena ke buena. All the children will scramble for candy. All the children will scramble and shout. All the children will grab for a cookie. And the other good things that spill out. All day!
The next song we're going to sing for you is about the dreidel. And it's a song of Jewish heritage. It's, we sing it actually in Israeli. And it's called Sevi Vahn.
Sevi Vahn so so so. Haruka huatap. Haruka huatap. Sevi Vahn so so so. Maxima hulaam. Neska dahaya shan. Neska dahaya shan. Maxima hulaam. Sevi Vahn so so so. Haruka huatap. Haruka huatap. Sevi Vahn so so so. Maxima hulaam. Neska dahaya shan. Neska dahaya shan. Maxima hulaam.
Our next song is a Christmas favorite, Do You Hear What I Hear?
Send the nightwing to the little lamb. Do you see what I see? Do you see what I see? Way up in the sky, little lamb. Do you see what I see? Do you see what I see? A star, a star dancing in the night with a tail as big as a kite. With a tail as big as a kite. Send the little lamb to the shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Do you hear what I hear? Ringing through the sky, shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Do you hear what I hear? A star, a star high above the trees with a voice as big as the sea. With a voice as big as the sea. Said the shepherd boy to the mighty king. Do you know what I know? Theme your palace for mighty king. Do you know what I know? A child, a child shivers in the cold and does bring in silver and gold. Let us bring in silver and gold. Said the king to the people everywhere. Listen to what I said. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I said. A child, a child sleeping in the night. He will bring us goodness and love. He will bring us goodness and love.
Our next song for you is a song... We're not quite to that one yet. That's okay. Our next song for you is a song, it's an English song. And it's a canon, which means it's basically a round. We'll do it in a four-part round in just a moment. And it's called Christmas Canon.
See him slumbering in the hay. He's sleeping at the close of day. Come sing his praises all night. And sing softly, sing. See him slumbering in the hay. He's sleeping at the close of day. Come see his praises close of day. Come see his praises close of day. Come see his praises close of day. And sing his praises close of day. And sing softly, sing. And sing softly, sing.
Okay, our final number before the introduction of the board is going to be Jingle Bell Rock.
Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells swing and jingle bells ring. Snowing and blowing up bushes of fun. Now the jingle hop has begun. Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells chime and jingle bell time. Dancing and prancing in jingle bell square in the frosty air. What a bright time, it's the right time to rock the night away. Jingle bell time, it's the swell time to go plodding in a one-horse sleigh. Giddy up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle around the clock. Mix and mingle in the jingle and beat. That's the jingle bell rock. Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells swing and jingle bells ring. Snowing and blowing up bushes of fun. Now the jingle hop has begun. Jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell rock. Jingle bells chime and jingle bell time. Dancing and prancing in jingle bell square in the frosty air. What a bright time, it's the right time to rock the night away. Jingle bell time, it's the swell time to go plodding in a one-horse sleigh. Giddy up, jingle horse, pick up your feet. Jingle around the clock. Mix and mingle in the jingle and beat. That's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell rock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The school board meeting of December 8th, 2015 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be turned off or put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during this wonderful special presentation portion of the meeting. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of the evening's board meeting, we have enjoyed the music from Cape Elementary Chorus under the direction of Robert Koch, Choir Director. At this time, the Cape Elementary Chorus will sing one more song for us. Mr. Koch.
Thank you. We'd like to sing a song now that's called Carol of the Angels. It's a partner song with Angels We Have Heard on High. And thank you so much for this opportunity to perform tonight.
Angels sing the news at night. Carols ring across the sky. Sweet wreaths and heavenly streets. A wondrous child is born. Sing Gloria, sing Gloria. Come lift up your voice in joyful song. For a wondrous child is born. Sing Gloria, sing Gloria. Come lift up your voice in joyful song. For a wondrous child is born. Angels we have heard on high. Sweetly singing o'er the plains and the mountains in reply. Echoing their joyous trains. in Ecclesiastal. in Ecclesiastal. Angels sing the news at night. Carols ring across the skies. Sweet wreaths and heavenly streets. A wondrous child is born. Sing Gloria, sing Gloria. Come lift up your voice in joyful song. For Ecclesiastal. Sing Gloria, sing Gloria. Come lift up your voice in joyful song.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll take a brief pause to let the clearance, to clear the performance area. Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce the evening's student representative. It's Dani Hayden. She's a junior in the IB program at Dunbar High School. Dani is a STEM student who has completed two years of the biomedical science, has participated in three years of JROTC, and is a member of the National Honor Society. Her interests include reading various types of literature and participating in team sports, specifically soccer and softball. Dani would like to attend law school to study corporate law and work towards opening her own law firm. Welcome, Dani. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, two recognitions, one acknowledgement, public comment, consent action item, which includes three items under executive services, seven items under business and finance, seven items under operations, and two items under teaching and learning. We have one attorney's recommendation, and one item for public hearing, and four items under other business. Board members, there are motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Labrie Vieira, second by Ms. Dozier. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. At this point, Ms. Dozier will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for all of the families that are represented here this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to gather here this evening for this school board meeting. As we know, in many countries, the people do not have the freedom to assemble like we are doing this evening. For that, we give you thanks. Dear God, we also ask that you please bring peace to the world during this holiday season, and not only during the holiday season, but throughout the year. Please be in people's hearts that are contemplating doing ill things to the world. And bring peace to their hearts as well. Please guide each of us this evening, the parents, the students, the members of the public, board members, and the superintendent as we speak this evening. Please let each of our presentations and our comments be respectful of others and ensure that our suggestions will benefit our students and our community. We ask that you guide the superintendent as he brings forth all of his recommendations. Please guide us as a board as we deliberate and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions concerning the recommendations that are brought to the table this evening. We pray that this meeting will be successful, productive, and blessed. For this, we give you the glory for all things that we will accomplish this evening. Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Master Sergeant Ignacio Villa Verde from Riverdale High School's Junior ROTC Program. Master Sergeant Villa Verde retired from active duty in March 2011 after 21 and a half years of service as a Senior Healthcare NCO and Combat Medic, and served during Operation Iraqi Freedom. He holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Puerto Rico in Psychology. Master Sergeant Villa Verde has been an Army instructor at Riverdale High School since January of 2012. Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Major Miguel Vieira from Riverdale High School Junior ROTC Program. Cadet Vieira is the Battalion Commander, the highest-ranking cadet at Riverdale. Cadet Vieira has been a squad leader, a company executive officer, and company commander. He has a GPA of 3.2 and has been a member of the Drill Team, Color Guard, Raider Team, Riverdale JV, and varsity basketball teams for the last three years. Upon graduation in May, Cadet Vieira will attain Florida Gulf Coast University. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Thank you, may be seated.
I would like to invite Ms. Susan Chastain, teacher for adult and career education, and Ms. Rita Effing, Director of Adult and Career Education, to please join me here at the lectern. The Adult and Community Educators, ACE, Teacher of the Year Award, was presented at the annual ACE of Florida Conference in Orlando on Wednesday, October 7. Nominations were accepted from all 67 districts, which represent thousands of adult educators throughout the state of Florida. This year, the nominee should be an exceptionally skilled and dedicated, part-time or full-time teacher in adult or community education. The teacher should have proven a record, a proven record of student success, participated in professional development activities, the support of students, fellow teachers, and administrators. The recipient of this year's award is Ms. Susan Chastain. She has worked in adult education for over 20 years. She is a dedicated, hard-working teacher, which is reflected through her students. She approaches each class with innovative teaching strategies, dedicated to student success and genuine overall care of her students. Her focus is to do what is best for the student. Ms. Chastain has also been instrumental in bridging collaborative working partnerships with many diverse and virtual community organizations, which are essential to program and student success, such as students are able to apply for scholarships to fund testing. They have the ability to establish a thriving partnership with the Salvation Army in order to promote lifelong learning. And she is the ACE liaison at the Lee County Career Source Center of southwest Florida, who offers services to students. The board and the superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate Ms. Susan Chastain for being awarded the 2015 ACE Teacher of the Year Award. Congratulations, Susan. Would you like to say something, Susan?
I just want to say I'm proud to work for Lee County. I've been in adult ed my entire career. I started out, my degree is in elementary education. I taught dropout prevention and used to take my students to sign up for their GED, and I found adult ed from that and just started at Dunbar Community School, have been in different departments or different sites throughout my career. Have met a host of you guys, and I want to thank Mavis Pasetti, who's been there my entire journey. We started way back at Dunbar Community School together, and it really has been a journey. We've served so many students. Our program has just grown and improved, and every session, it's different, but it's better. And just, I don't know, every day you go in, we serve our students and watch them walk across the stage and just couldn't be prouder of them. And then, we just go back and do it again. And so, I'm just grateful. May have served some relatives or friends of yours, and I'm just grateful to be here with the board and have had this career. And I want to thank my family for coming. My kids, my husband are here, so I'm just grateful to be a part of this. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Each year, the district solicits entries for its annual holiday greeting card display. And this year, the event was open to our middle school students. Once the entries are received, staff reviews them and votes for their favorites, which are then displayed in our lobby throughout the holiday season. It is my privilege this evening to introduce our middle school student artists. As I call your name, please come forward with your school representatives. From Cypress Lake Middle, we have Esmeralda Flores, student, 8th grade. Alyssa Alex San Miguel, a student also in 8th grade. With her comes Ms. Kelly Maniscalco and her art teacher, Ms. Joy Williams. Certificates? From Horns Marsh Middle, we have Shelley Monica Figueroa, a student in 8th grade. Dr. Charles Lucky, the principal. And Ms. Kirsten Barrow, art teacher. From North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, we have Sydney Mury, a student in 8th grade. Ms. Teresa West Taylor, the art teacher, and Mrs. Guns, assistant principal. Yes, thank you. I was looking, I thought none of you looked like Dr. Santini. There you go, congratulations. Especially by Friday. Yes, to dance. From Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle, Annie Vardanyan is a student in 8th grade. Coming with her is Dr. Nathan Schaefer, principal, and Ms. Kellen Mills, art teacher. From Trafalgar Middle, Vincenza Esteva? Did I do the last name right? Is a student in 6th grade. Good for you. And Dr. Michael Galbraith, principal, and Ms. Margaret Horn, art teacher. And Assistant Principal Kevin Beckman, excuse me. From Varsity Lakes Middle, Carolina Amparo, a student in 8th grade. Alyssa Seiya, another student in 8th grade. Mr. Damon Assert, principal. And Ms. Marjorie Wrestler, art teacher. And Alyssa? The artistic talent of these students and the dedication of their principals and art teachers are sincerely appreciated. Their efforts have brightened all of our holidays.
Good evening. The character education word for December is kindness or compassion. Demonstrating concern for the well-being of others, giving support and showing empathy. Be kind, treat others as you would have them treat you. The quote, "Be kind, remember everyone you meet is fighting a hard battle." The design you see displayed was created by Tanya Solberg, an 11th grade student from Riverdale High School.
Thank you, Dani. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address the agenda item of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting began, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Mr. Toyber, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allotted for speakers, three minutes. Mr. Toyber, I have two cards this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anybody on the right side of the auditorium that would like to speak that did not fill out a card? Okay, Marriott Daxia and Ms. Quackenbush. Is there anybody on the left side? Okay, Mr. Martin, would you please call the first card?
Mr. George Fox.
Thank you, board superintendent. Wanted to address the board tonight on my area of concern, which is finance, of course. Dr. Atkins, last time I saw you in public, you spoke about the half-cent sales tax and your reluctance to maybe pursue it in that you wanted to demonstrate in the better efficiency in the district to save money. And that's absolutely a crucial thing that should be done. I think you're doing an excellent job. But the idea of financing schools is not, should not be tied to the overall budget of a school district. It was only when the district started using certificates of participation that your operating budget started affecting paying off school debt. Before that, they used construction bonds. And I would like to see this district get back to at least construction bonds, if not the half-cent sales tax. The reason I suggest the half-cent sales tax because it's by far the best way to finance a school, without question. It's cheaper for the taxpayers, it's more efficient for the district. It's as far and away the best way to do business, paying cash. And I'm glad our board knows that, but we're waiting patiently for this to come about. And so, that's what I'd like to suggest to you. If you can't do the sales tax, then do a construction bond. But you have got, if you want to help this district, you've got to get it off a certificate of participation. It is a poor, poor way of financing. First of all, it's pretty iffy legally. It's really borderline legal, which explains why it deteriorates your credit and it's just not a good idea to do. But you can get away with it because you, you know, I don't know why. Really don't. But it shouldn't be legal. So, therefore, if you want to really help this district in the area of finance and increase its efficiency and save the taxpayers' money and take the burden off the teachers and the employees and the students, because the students' money is being raided to pay debt service, that's outrageous. When people make millions of dollars on Wall Street while our students suffer. It's outrageous. People in Lee County want to build schools. The people in Lee County should pay for them, either through a construction bond or a half-cent sales tax. The half-cent sales tax is the best way to do it. And at the same time, hopefully in 2016, that you will also go for a 1.0 millage for debt reduction, which is allowed by the law. You could pay off the Benita School and pay for every school going forward with cash and get this district out of debt in four years if you were to go for both of those on the 2016 ballot. Yes, it's true, Ms. Dozier. It is true, absolutely, absolutely true. Oh, I'm sorry. If you did a half-cent sales tax and a 1.0 millage debt reduction, debt retirement millage, which is, both are allowed by the state law.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Your time's up, sir. Ms. Lori Fahey.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Miller, or it's Mr. Martin. Sorry about that. I was watching the briefing meeting today, and I was very excited to see that the district did a workshop on the assessments and testing. I was concerned from the time that the news press announced that we were no longer doing district testing because we were still seeing the checkpoint tests. And Mrs. Fisher and Mrs. Dozier, I really appreciate you bringing those concerns to the table. And if the rest of you did, I may have missed that segment, so I apologize. I think that a very easy way to clear up the confusion is to list the tests that are given at each school on the websites or on the district website. It would clear up a lot of confusion and it would help us as parents. From what I've heard in the lower schools, the students aren't, their grade is not affected by the checkpoint tests, but in middle school, it is. And so, it's been more of a concern at that level. I'm not sure why we're not following with the guidelines that we do not need to monitor children with IEPs, progress monitor them because they're already being progress monitored. And I believe the others are the four and above on the FSA. But I just mainly wanted to say I really appreciate you looking at the testing. I hope you don't stop here. And have a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Now move Ms. Athanakku.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Atkins. There's a lot of things going on in our school district. We have another bullying case. We have covering up of a bullying case. We have fudging reports of the bullying case. We have a teacher that is doing drugs. You are well aware of it. So, what did you do? You moved her to a different school. I know we have a shortage of teachers. I understand that. But what we continue to do in our district is to take problems and just move them around the district so this teacher can go on to abuse some more kids. You think this is proper to our children? Is this protecting our children in this district? You know who I'm talking about. I'm not going to give the person's name. Her husband has been arrested in Cape Coral for robbing 17 houses to supply her drug addiction. It's disgusting what you guys are doing. Now, as far as the teachers you're going to be losing this year... Now, as far as the teachers, you're going to be losing this year because of the testing. The testing, you're using the children's grades to evaluate teachers. This is so unfair to our teachers. We're testing, 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 the kids are frustrated like crazy. I'm glad to hear that you guys were addressing it today. It's a big load off my mind, because I was really going to listen to yous. I did not hear your action meeting, because I was working. Now I see on the agenda, again, we're paying Sam Galloway Ford another 400 and some odd dollars, 400 and some odd thousand dollars for vehicles, again, but this company gets an awful lot of our money, and I have to wonder, why is it always Sam Galloway? There's so many other dealers out there, but we keep going with only the one. So I question what's going on here? Who has the special interest sitting up on the board? You're not opening these bids up to other people in the community, it is unfair and it is unlawful, and you know this, it's a violation. When a bid is coming up for renewal, it needs to go out publicly and let people bid on it, but it's always the same vendors over and over. So the public is starting to question these things. Where is our accountant? Why do we not have somebody sitting up here, an auditor? Two years now, we're waiting for you to replace that auditor that got fired. Awful lot of money is coming and going out of this district, but the people are not getting the answers we keep asking for. I did address a $1.6 million misplacement of funds, I'll put it politely.
Thank you, Ms. Orthodoxi, your time's up, ma'am.
Ms. Quackenbush?
Well, when I spoke earlier, I didn't wish you a Merry Christmas, and I definitely want to do that, because we have a bright future before us, we have an opportunity to make change. Even though we've stumbled, the state is a bully, the federal government is a bully, we have a curriculum that's very difficult for us to work with, it's not providing the stair steps our children need, we need to reevaluate it now that you know you have the responsibility for the curriculum and for what our children are learning. And what are they learning? And what aren't they learning? This is really a key idea that we have to tackle, and I encourage you to put into your plan this year to have several meetings dedicated to this one, because it is the most important thing we do. We know that testing isn't working, testing isn't teaching, teaching is teaching. We need to get rid of all of these tests and give the kids the time to learn that they deserve. Thank you very much.
Mr. Valenta.
Before I start my, what I had prepared, I just want to kind of reiterate what Mary Orthodoxi said about that empty chair. Okay, I've said it at several meetings before, and it's very important that we fill that chair, so please work on that. You know the chair, I mean, right? The auditor chair. That chair, right there, that's empty, the auditor, the board, it's the third employee that you're allowed to hire and fire. Mr. Martin, Mr. Atkins, and that empty chair, those are your three employees. We need that third employee. I wrote this before, I was not able to watch or attend the briefing meeting. I heard some good things when I got here, but I had already written this, so I'm just going to read it as, and then I'll add something, because I think maybe there's some good news from today, I don't know. I'm sure that we are all aware of the recent incident in San Bernardino, and I'm sure all our hearts go out to the victims and families. While it's true that the woman was here on a visa, it's equally true that the man was a citizen who went through a local school system, a school system which has increasingly taught our kids to hate America. Even our own curriculum is full of incorrect statements designed to raise a generation devoid of love and respect for this once great nation. We have been telling you for a year or two about all of the lies and myths and truths in our own local books, and yet nothing has been done about it. Now, I heard a rumor that maybe something's about to be done about it, and I certainly hope that's true. And if that's true, kudos. Let's give our students the best Christmas gift we can and begin teaching the Constitution and the debates that got us there. We have the authority to do it, so let's do it. Let's not talk about it or create a study to consider thinking about talking about it. Let's do it, please. May everyone have a Merry Christmas, and we shall reconvene here after the New Year with a New Year's resolution to teach every student the Constitution. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Egel.
I wanted to talk about the investigation, which was the Nancy Graham investigation, but it actually affected numerous students and was around Charles Daley. The investigation's scope was chosen carefully and voted on, in my belief, to limit what could be investigated. Here's what I mean. Mr. Gonzalez did some investigating. He found out that not only was there this one case, there was many cases over the last few years. So if the scope is narrowed, he doesn't have to report it as a lawyer. So the culpability would be taken away from the board if they didn't find out, and Mr. Gonzalez hasn't turned over, as far as I know, that information to you. So here's some information. First of all, Mark Anderson's files and the original report are not his files. There's somebody named David Anderson out of Benita Middle. That information was, I have no idea why wrong information was given out. Who in the district gave wrong information out about this person? Who can't do their job or is so incompetent, or was it corrupt? And that's number one. Why wasn't this caught? Or was it caught and it was put out on purpose? That single event isn't even the real one. There were numerous violations for a few years. One thing I did when this happened is I met with a few people who were involved in the investigation before the school district did, and I saw the reports, I saw the fact that nothing was turned into Pearson, I saw the fact that the district never reported it to the FLDOE. So there's numerous 10 to 12 events that were told to Mr. Daley were never reported. That's the big deal here, not one, but these 10 or 12. So because I went personally, the question is, why were they not reported? Why is the district not doing anything about it? And the fact is, Mr. Martin, you can do this, you can't withhold information from one investigation because you're starting another one. And I'd like to hear your comment, because I have a lot of lawyer friends who are listening.
Mr. Egel, you're addressing the board, so please keep your comments directed to the board.
Perhaps he could talk about that, because the fact is, the fact that one person up here has already received it, you have 20 days to turn it over, as I believe Ms. Dozier wrote to Superintendent Graham in one of the emails that was publicized in the news press, it's 20 days, and since somebody up here already has it, it should have been turned over, and it's not. So my question is, what are we going to do about it? How do we have the people who are going for the Benita High School and all their officials look at this kind of stuff and say, hey, timeout here? How can I believe the school district if this information is false? So we're going to have a lot to clean up here, and I look forward to that happening. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Egel. As for all of Mr. Egel's comments, there is currently an investigation under review, so I won't address any of that this time. Moving on now to our approval or action items under the agenda consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull discussion under the unfinished tabled items portion of the agenda? Do we have any at that point? We didn't table that one.
We don't have any tabled items to address at this meeting, yes.
Is there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I do have one, but I'm looking for the number. I lost my paper, I'm sorry. Can you come back to me, please?
Ms. Dozier?
I don't have any calls.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Ms. LaRiviere? I didn't buy you much time, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, 4D5.
Four?
D5.
D5. Can you give me a page number?
Page 102.
On page 102. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus the item of 4D5?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Fisher?
Second.
Second by Ms. LaRiviere.
It was actually by me.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this point, I'll take a motion to cover the item 4D5.
Okay, for discussion. I had sent an email...
Well, before we do that, Mr. Atkins, would you like to read, would you read the item of 4D5, please, on page 102?
Sure will. I recommend board approval to piggyback Lee County School Board County Commissioner's contract number Q-110171 for the purchase of Ford automobiles, sport utility vehicles, passenger and light duty vans, light and medium duty trucks and cab chassis awarded to Sam Galloway Ford, Inc. for the period of November 8, 2015 through June 9, 2016 for a one-time expenditure of $425,253, with an option to cancel if deemed to be in the best interest of the district. Approval utilizes, authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the recommendation to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Ms. Fisher?
Okay, yes, I had emailed the superintendent asking about the bid, and I said, did we, have we recently, in recent years, had any competitive bids, and was this the best price, the best warranty, and are we getting a return on this investment? So that was...
I will answer the best I can, because I did get that today, so, but anyway, I'll give you the talking points that I receive. I usually ask for talking points to help us in case there's any additional questions, and with this particular one, you know, the contract for the purchase of Ford automobile sport utility vehicles, as this discusses, bid was awarded to Sam Galloway for periods of June 10, 2011 through June 9, 2016, and the request is a piggyback for the purposes of buying vehicles for maintenance services and printing services department. The funding for the vehicles was approved as a part of the board-approved budget. The expenditure breakdown, and this is an answer, I'm getting to answer your question, but the expenditure breakdown is for one F450 lift more 5,000 crane at the cost of $68,898, one F150 at a cost of $23,852, one F450 at a cost of $48,013, six Transit 350 HD vans at a cost of $36,795, for a total of $361,533 to enable Maintenance Services Department personnel to perform routine field support tasks and school support functions. Printing services, two Transit 35 HD vans at $31,860 for a total cost of $63,720 to enable mailroom couriers to complete mail routes between schools and the district administration locations, so the total cost is $425,253. The questions were, is it the best price? Yes, if Ford vehicles meet district specifications, and I do know, you know, just from, and this is just anecdotal conversations I've had with Mr. Flock, is that they always seem to come in at the lowest price whenever these bids do occur. So is it the best price? Yes, in his opinion, and under state contract warranty, yes. And return on the investment, the answer to the question was yes, but that, I was attempting to get additional information, because I didn't think that fully answered the question, to be quite honest. So that's where I was at before we came here this evening. If there's a desire, it can come back with more information, I'd be happy to.
Well, the other part of my question is that, you said the original contract was from June 10, 2011 to June 9, 2016? So now this is an additional purchase?
No.
In the time of that contract, for the period of November 8 through June 9?
No. Just as a matter of fact, Dr. Atkins, if I can come step in, this is a piggyback bid. Basically, the Lee County, just for the public's knowledge, Lee County, the Lee County BOC went out and wanted to purchase vehicles. They went through the purchasing process and went out through the bid processes prescribed by law and by the rules promulgated by the Lee County County Commission. They struck a five-year deal after all the bids went out, and it went out regionally like we do. Anybody couldn't bid on it locally and/or across the nation to bid on this. It was awarded to Sam Galloway. Sam Galloway had to make the bid sometime in late 2010 or 2011, forecasting the prices, and they locked in the prices, so you actually lock in a five-year price. You're at the very end of a five-year contract, you're benefiting from the prices that were estimated or quoted back in 2010, 2011. This is a really good deal, because if you go out and were to put a bid out now, you would be bidding on Model 15, 16 prices that they couldn't have forecasted back in 2010 or 2011. So this is actually a good, if you can, that's why you actually have renewal contracts. When you have a five-year rolling contract, you try to get a rollover for a two-year and a second two-year, so you get rollover, so you still lock in the prices that you had back in 2010, 2011. We have the right, as a nonprofit Florida institution, to use other state institution bids, and so we found, you know, our purchasing department looks feverishly across the state, Orange County, Tallahassee, everywhere they can, on municipalities and counties and school boards, to look for like-kind purchases, so they can lock in those deals and save our taxpayers' money from reinventing the wheel and going out and doing the same thing and getting the same or a worse price, because now the prices have mitigated and went upward as inflation and costs accrue. So we're now in that bid and in that contract time period, our contract period is within that window, so we can benefit from that contract. So all of our purchases are right in that contract. As for a payback, there is no payback. This is a capital expenditure for operations to maintain for our maintenance services and our printing services. It's a sunk cost. We have to have this equipment for us to do our jobs, and we capitalize it and we amortize it using straight-line depreciation, and we bid that stuff, I mean, we take that as a cost, and we pay it across our line, and we amortize it across the vehicle time, which is a seven-year, I believe, seven-year amortization, seven-year amortization. So that's the price that we do, and we talk about our capital budget, this is the type of things we need, school buses, vehicles, for our employees to do their jobs. Ms. Dozier?
And I'm just going to make a comment on the piggyback. I've asked this question in the past about piggybacking, and I'm not going to repeat everything that Mr. Toyber said, but what I am going to say is, we were told that when we have a piggyback, it's because they've already generated the lowest price. And the lowest price is a price that we locked in, as he said. And it sometimes is not in the best interest of the vendor, but they guaranteed that price, and that's the price that they have to continue to go with. And when that piggyback bid sunsets, then there will be another bid that will go out, and then everyone will have the opportunity to bid again. That's all I have.
Ms. Fisher?
So am I understanding, then, that we're going to be purchasing those items that you read off your list between now and June?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this point, we have no superintendent's recommendation, so we will now recess the regular school board meeting and change to the Leasing Corporation, to our, the School Board Leasing Corporation. And I will turn this over at this point to Ms. Morgan, the president of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation. Ms. Morgan?
Yes, as president of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation, I would like to call this meeting of December 8, 2015 to order, the time is 6:52 PM. This evening's agenda includes public comment, two secretaries' recommendations, other business, and a German Doehra motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Fisher, seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. We will now take public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Public comment is allowed at this point in the meeting. The subject of comment is limited to the operations of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation. The time allotted for speakers, three minutes.
Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address the board? Mr. Fox? Anyone on the left side? Okay, Mr. Fox.
Reading the agenda, I really didn't see this coming, so these are not prepared remarks. But the fact that you have a leasing corporation... But the fact that you have a leasing corporation is, you know, silly to even have one. Once again, it goes back to the idea of paying, getting the cash in to pay for your buildings, so you're not leasing them from yourself, which, again, is another iffy concept. Legally, you know, not really legal, but somehow, some way, it exists, but it's very, very inefficient, and it just leads to nothing but problems. You're here tonight with a leasing corporation when you absolutely do not need to be, and I recommend to this board and superintendent to get us out of this, get the district's debt paid off, pay cash for your buildings through the half-cent sales tax. Thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We will now move to the secretary's recommendations. There are two recommendations?
Yes. First recommendation, I recommend approval of the minutes of the last Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting held on November eighteenth, twenty fourteen.
You've heard this secretary's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. The next recommendation.
Next recommendation, I recommend approval of the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers.
Directors, you have heard the secretary's recommendation to approve the organizational resolution of the Lee County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers. Stephen K. Toiber, president; Mary Fisher, vice president; Gregory Atkins, secretary; Amy Decimore, treasurer. I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Mr. Toiber, it's yours.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. We will now move to.
Close the meeting.
What's that? No, it's still, we're still, now I'm the president.
Now he's chair.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you, Ms. Dozier. Always, it's good to keep us in line. We'll now move to other business. Please note that the comment, we're now going to take comments from our, our directors and our officers. Please note that comments may be only directed to your capacity as director or officer of the corporation. Ms. Fisher.
No comment.
Ms. Dozier.
No comments, thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
And Ms. LaRiviere. Okay, at this point, we have no other business coming before the body. I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, motion by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, at this time, we will now reconvene the school board meeting on December eighth. It is now six fifty-five. At this point, we'll move to board attorney's recommendations. We have the approval of the appointment of the value adjustment board. Mr. Martin.
Yes. Mr. Toiber, board members, I have one recommendation this evening. Florida statutes requires that the school board appoint a school board member to serve on the county value adjustment board. At your November tenth, two thousand and fifteen organizational workshop, you discussed appointing members for that purpose. So this evening, I recommend board approval of the appointment of Mrs. Jeanne Dozier as a school board member representative to the value adjustment board with Mr. Stephen Toiber as the alternate school board member.
Board members, you heard the attorney's recommendation to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this point, this closes the board attorney's recommendations. We will now move to public hearing. Before I close the meeting and open up for public hearing, Dr. Atkins, would you please present your recommendation for this evening's public hearing?
I recommend board approval of the contract with Harlem Heights Community Charter School, Inc., for the school designated for students in grades K three, to be called Harlem Heights Community Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. At this point, the public, we invite to speak on this one item. The time allowed will be three minutes. If anyone is here to speak on this particular item on the right side, please raise your hand. Anybody on the left side? Seeing no, nobody, I will now close the public hearing, reconvene the regular school board meeting on December eighth. Dr. Atkins, would you please restate your recommendation?
Yes, I recommend board approval of this contract with Harlem Heights Community Charter School, Inc., for the school designated for the students in grades K three, to be called Harlem Heights Community Charter School. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute related documents.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the recommendation to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Morgan, seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. At this point, we have no more items before us. We will now move to other business. We'll start with board member comments. Ms. LaRiviere, I'll start with you.
I'm going, there are a number of things that were brought up, and I believe that once all the information is back from Mr. Gonzalez, we will be able to answer some questions regarding that situation. And happy holidays, happy holy days, as we are in the midst of celebrating Hanukkah, the festival of lights, a wonderful miracle, and historical evidence of the, of the winning of the battle with the Maccabees. The holy days of Christmas, for those of you who celebrate that, with the coming of the Christ child. It's a time for family, it's a time for being with friends, a time for rejoicing. But some, and our, some of our children and their families aren't going to be, have a hard time rejoicing. Our church has adopted one of the schools in the district, and members were surprised to find out that in this one school, that there were forty children that were homeless. And that's just a drop in the bucket of the number of homeless students within our district and families. So this year, I'm not giving as many gifts to other people who really don't need gifts, choosing to do some things for some other people instead. And I would encourage you this year to see what you can do to reach out to some others. Little boy whose name I drew wants a gift card to go to Red Lobster for dinner. Didn't ask for anything for himself, he just wanted his family to be able to go out to dinner. So if you're out and about and you're close to a school, every one of our schools has members in their district, in their school, that are homeless. So pick up a gift card to a Walmart, or a Target, or, or a Red Lobster, or wherever, and drop it off, and the school will make sure that it gets into the hands of the families who really need it. Enjoy the holidays, be safe, and wrap your arms around everyone you love.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah, I hope, again, the board will indulge me, since I didn't get to do board member comments after the briefing this afternoon. So just a couple of things. First of all, finance advisory has agreed to do, that has split into three subgroups. They're going to be tackling three projects between now and January. One is roofing materials, the second is naming rights policy and capital fundraising, and the third is school choice and specialty program cost. Today, I got to attend the QIAC meeting, and, let's see, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin, I learned today that policy one point oh eight is not consistent with the charge to the QIAC group, so they, they mentioned that that policy needs to be revisited. So I just put that out there for you. Their focus over the next two meetings is going to be focus area four, hire and retain quality staff. And they gave me a little thing to think about today, because I talk a lot about continuous improvement and transformational change, and they said that the formula is continuous improvement plus innovation equals transformative change. So that will be my mantra going forward. Did somebody mention about the foundation grants? Oh, okay. Well, then, most of us were at the foundation for Lee County Public Schools, granted approximately eighty thousand dollars in school and classroom grants about a week ago, and that's always a great time to celebrate the innovation taking place at the school level and in the classrooms. So that's always a great event. I visited AMI the other day, and they mentioned to me that they attended the recruitment fair, and they actually were able to recruit some teachers, and they were thrilled to be included in that fair. So that's, that's, that's great. Estero High School, if anybody is in the Benita area on a Saturday and goes to the promenade to shop at the farmer's market, the Estero Culinary Arts Department will wash and cut and prepare for you fruits and vegetables. And they, everybody in Benita is talking about Estero High School, because these kids are, are in the promenade, they're displaying their culinary skills, they're providing a service, and you just put something in the bucket for the kids. And so that's great. Going to ask you all to do something. I went to TICE today. They entered a contest called Made by Milk, and the contest is to create a sculpture from milk cartons. And they have created a Quetzal bird, and they're calling it Lakito, which is Spanish for milk. And so they are soliciting votes for their, and, and when you see this bird, you will not, this, this bird that you see is all milk cartons. It, it is amazing. It is amazing. So anyway, and that's it. Oh, sure, there you go. Thank you. So I wish you all a very happy holiday also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Dozier.
Maybe we could put that up on the screen, so that the people at home can also follow these instructions and go and vote. Maybe they could put this up after the meeting or something like that. Congratulations to Ms. Susan Chastain for being selected as the adult educator of the year. I have known Ms. Chastain for a long time, and she really does an outstanding job, and she truly cares about all of those people that she, she touches and all the lives that she comes in contact with. I also want to congratulate all of the student card winners this evening. I think all of the cards were, they did an outstanding job, and I'm going to put in a little pitch that I've put in since we've moved over here to this building. One of these days, I just know that I'm going to see those cards sitting right out there by the thing that says the name of the school building. I just know that's going to happen one day, because I know that somebody would donate the plywood, and then it would just be a matter of us having somebody put them up out there, and then it might bring the joy or a smile to someone's face who's having a stressful time during this holiday season, and they look up and they see that artwork, and they just go, ah, and just kind of have a, just a warm, fuzzy feeling inside. Then our kids get a warm, fuzzy feeling inside, too. So, you know, we're so stingy by keeping it, you know, cooped up here in the building for only our employees to enjoy, so I just know that that's going to happen one of these days, maybe even next year, who knows? There were some comments made about the auditor this evening, and I think I heard somebody say that they, before they were fired, well, the auditor was not fired, I have to clarify that. Instead, she relocated to a different area. In fact, I think she went to Oregon. And out of the sixty-seven counties in the state of Florida, there's, there's only, I think there's only two or three that actually have an auditor. But we have something that I think is the best of all worlds. We have an interlocal agreement with the clerk of courts, and anytime we want to have any type of a audit done, we can ask Linda Doggett to do that. So if there's something specific that you believe that we need to have audited, please call me, we'll talk about it, and I will certainly see if I can't bring that forward to this board. I know that there's been a talk about the one point two million dollars that supposedly is missing, and I have, I have had a conversation around that with Dr. Atkins, and I, I still, I, I would need more information on that, because we don't really know what that's referring to. I hope that everyone has a very safe holiday. All of our teachers need a must, much-needed rest, all of our kids, as you travel during the holidays, your parents, I hope bring you back safe and sound. Yes, there are many of our children that are homeless, there are many of our children that do not have, will not have as much as some, and I agree with Mrs. LaRiviere that if we can touch someone or help someone during the holidays that's less fortunate than we are, please do. In fact, in this building, a hundred and ninety-nine of our employees actually took an angel off of the tree that Dr. Atkins graciously allowed in this building from the Salvation Army, which will go to, those hundred and ninety-nine children are actually students of Lee County, and it's so cute, you know, the things that, that they put on their, their little wish list, and, and I just, I appreciate everybody that took an angel and went and got one, and I know we all were playing like little Santa Claus. I saw Ms. Morgan come in this morning with her stuff, and, and, you know, everybody, you know, that, that took part in that, thank you so much. And there's still opportunities everywhere that you can participate, and you can help children, so I would encourage you to do that, because it really does make your heart feel good. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and remember the reason for the season, and thank you.
Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. I want to thank Danny Hayden for joining us this evening as our student representative, and I want to say that I'm looking forward to our meeting tomorrow night with the Student Advisory Committee. Our students bring with them a wealth of knowledge and information, and I appreciate that they share it with us. As the talent that was shown in the Christmas cards tonight, which is a small sampling of the talent that we have in our district, in our students, and no matter how you spend your holiday, I want to extend my wishes for good health, happiness for you and your family, and peace in your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Hayden.
Good evening. I just want to say that today was a great experience for me. It's my first meeting ever, you're right, in, in the board meeting. And I realize that this is a good atmosphere to voice your opinions, and I, I kind of appreciate this, because I, I do see that teachers and other members of the, of the, I want to say the school district, the community, right, gets to kind of bring out their opinions, and it's not all, in a sense, covered. You know, you guys, you all get to state how you feel about certain topics, and I, and I really do appreciate this atmosphere, because it not only helps the community, but it also does help the students. And I just want to give a special, I do attend Dunbar High School, it's a very great school. But I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, and have a great Christmas break. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny.
Thank you, Ms. Hayden. Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir. Board members, just a little bit of legal advice concerning a couple of issues that were raised this evening. With respect to piggybacking first, just to clarify the law on that issue, the State Board of Education Rule six eight, one point zero one two clearly does authorize school boards, in accordance with Florida statute, to piggyback on other bids that were competitively accomplished by other state agencies, other governmental agencies of the state, such as Board of County Commissioners, and that's clearly allowed by Florida law. The other issue is, the issuance of certificates of participation, it clearly is authorized by Florida law for the purpose of financing the cost of acquisition, construction of school sites. It's a practice that this school, school board and many other school boards across the state have used for many years. It clearly is in compliance with Florida law. And one more issue, Ms. Morgan, you mentioned the Quality Improvement Advisory Committee and stated that their, that the policy is inconsistent with their charge. Of course, the policy is their charge. I'm not sure what's, what's meant by that, but the policy, of course, prescribes their purpose, which is adopted by the school board.
All I can say is that they reported out to, to us that they felt that what they were doing was inconsistent with what was in the policy, and frankly, I haven't looked at the policy since this morning, so I couldn't speak to what the inconsistency is, but I will follow up with Ken Savage.
We'll just have to clarify.
Okay. And since I've interrupted, I want to say one more thing. That, if, if, if TICE wins that contest, they get five thousand dollars for the school. That's why it's so important.
But you know what? I think they've already selected.
No, no, I voted this morning, after I got it. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, is that all?
That's all, thank you.
Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, just, just a few items. First of all, I want to take a moment to recognize a, an appointment. Trent Eckhart was formerly a teacher at Island Coast High School, has been appointed Assistant Principal at the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, and so please stand and be recognized. And as an Assistant Principal at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, I expect awesome things out of you, being my former school, so, and I know you'll deliver. Secondly, I'd like to just comment on a couple of things that, that came up this evening. First of all, we mentioned in the briefing, but I want to mention it, mention it now, we are, we are redoing or doing our budget process differently, as you all know, and this is really for the public that is here, you know, in terms of what Mr. Fox raised, I think that, that we owe the public, we want to make sure that they are very confident in the way we, we spend our money, and so we're going about a budget process based on our district strategic plan, and, and allocating our resources based on the priorities as we set forth in that particular plan. So I think in doing that process, we can identify gaps and overlaps and places that we can spend our resources more wisely, and so I'm really looking forward to that process, and want to commend Dr. Decimores and, and her team for their efforts in that respect. So stay tuned. The second thing, we did talk a little, quite a bit about testing and assessment, and I thought that the schools did a fantastic job with talking about how they progress monitor and so forth, and, and, and I really felt that they're really taking ownership and did a really good job with explaining those things, so I want to thank them, and, and, you know, if you didn't see the presentation today, definitely, you know, go online and, and check it out, because I think you'll be really happily, pleasantly surprised, or at least pleased with what you see our schools actually doing as it relates to assessment. You see that, that the progress monitoring and assessment that, that they are doing is driving instruction, that's the purpose of it. Are we done? No, we have a long way to go, and I think that's something that we talked about today. There's a lot of things that we have to do to improve, there's a lot of things we have to do in this country to improve in, in terms of testing. The report that I mentioned earlier today is something I'm going to make available in your all's offices, so I encourage you to take a look at it. It, it just, it's, it's pretty meaty, there's a lot to it, it is online. Again, that's Student Testing in America's Great City Schools, an inventory and preliminary analysis, October 2015, and that's by the Council for, for Great City Schools. It was, just recently came out, but it just gives you a really thorough overview and also provides some recommendation, many of which we are, are taking under consideration already doing. I also wanted to mention too that we are planning to go out in January and talk to the public about, about our testing, progress, monitoring, assessment system. That's something that I've heard here in public comment, I've heard the board also make that request, so I would encourage those of you that are interested in that topic, please come on out and, and join us, and make your voices heard. And then we did talk about, a little bit about standards. What we were talking about earlier today is, I think that, that standards that we currently have in the state of Florida, and this is, this is personal opinion, but there's probably others that share that opinion, and that is that if you are talking about trying to get into a competitive college, and I give University of Florida as just an example, or Florida State, or, or Harvard, or MIT, or something like that, our standards are not rigorous to, to meet their qualifications for entrance into those type of, of colleges and universities that are competitive. In fact, one would argue that they may be barely enough to make it into a non-competitive institution, that our students have to do more than our standard to get into, to reach that level. So the other thing is, there are gaps in terms of the standards, and there, there are opportunities to actually address those gaps here locally with things that we locally find important, so, you know, I, I think that's something that we look forward to doing and, as we move forward, so. And then I haven't even mentioned career and tech ed, which is a totally different subject, because I think the standards that we have set in Florida try to address both career and tech ed and university, and I think they're two different things. They really are two different things, so, you know, to think Algebra II prepares you for HVAC, chill water, I don't know if it does that, you know, I think there may be a better way. So enough about that, but look forward to further conversation. There were some things that came up about investigations. I do have a meeting with Mr. Regal, and I'll be happy to talk to him about what I can at this point in time, but also just want to seek clarification. I think it's, you know, important ultimately that we, we are transparent to the public, and, and I certainly want to make sure that we're, we're doing that and answer those questions. Other than that, I just want to do wish everybody Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and have a wonderful new year if we don't see you, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And I would like to thank the Cape Coral Chorus for performing for us tonight, and all of the card authors that contributed, both the ones that, the finalists and everybody, all the middle schoolers that contributed, and I agree with Ms. Dozier, I think that we should have it as prominent as we can to display some of the great work that our, our children are doing. As far as the things you can do for the community, Drew Steele from AM Radio actually initiated a great program here for Lee County. It's the Christmas cards for, for our soldiers overseas that are away from home during, during the holidays. You know, we have the largest JROTC contingent in the country. We should be very proud of our soldiers overseas, our men and women that protect us so we can enjoy our holidays. If you'd like to, to contribute, they're trying to get 20,000 cards, they're up to about 14,000 cards. This morning, we had Pelican Elementary second grade class deliver 250 cards with heartfelt messages in there for our soldiers, so everybody's contributing. Please don't have buy glitter cards, because they can't send glitter, but you can send your cards to PO Box 877 in Fort Myers, 33901, to have them in there by Friday. It doesn't matter what you do on the outside of the card, because they rip them open, and that's what they have to do, and put them in piles. I'm also going to ask Dr. Atkins, if you would put this, have Amity put this on the front page of our website for a couple of days, that actually shows you the steps on how you have to log on to vote for this particular thing. It's $5,000 to one of our schools that did a lot of work, and so if everybody would just take a minute, if you take the time to fill out a Taco Bell review, you can take the time to vote for our kids, so please do it, it's free, and I'll give it to, it'll be on our website at the end of today. I'd like to just wish everybody a blessed holiday, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy Hanukkah. We will have our next board meeting, will be on Tuesday, January 12, 2016. We'll have a school board meeting at 2:00 PM. I'd like to thank our student, Ms. Danny Hayden, for representing our, our school, our school, school student representative committee today, and, and hope she'll take something back to our school and back to the committee. At this point, having no further business coming before this body, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Dozier, seconded by Ms. LaRiviere. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion is adjourned, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.